Thank you. Mr. Nixon, Joey Nixon, would you leave some time?
Yes, pardon. I have a call to the county's all here, so if you have a vote for your votes, put your hand over your seat down there. If you want to go, please. Please, you, as far as the people who are here represent, they're all over. They're supporting you, they're supporting you. The country's been through a lot of loss, a lot of shit, a lot of loss, and a lot of trouble. But you're big with our country. Time right now is spending, you can get us through to all those. They don't say, no, it's going forward, just keep the family together. But you're big with our first responders, military, and family, too. And your mom's up there. Most of all, I thank my mother, my sister, my brother. It's me, but, again.
Joey, a flag, a flag to lead.
To the flag. To the Republican Party.
To the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Your roll call, Stacy?
Glenn Reese.
Here.
Terry Givens.
Here.
Billy Bass.
Here.
Greta Kirby.
Here.
Jason Stewart.
Here.
Jamie Winfrey.
Here.
Josh Brown.
Here.
Dalton Pascal.
Here.
Shannon Minchi.
Here.
Erica Ebel.
Here.
Ron Schumay.
Here.
Ryan Cowan.
Here.
Linda Nixon.
Here.
Eddie Stell.
Here.
Casey Elrod.
Here.
Steve Babcock.
Here.
Bill Reese.
Here.
Tommy Bane.
Here.
Joey Nixon.
Here.
Dennis Hackett. Tim Keller.
Here.
Teresa Gross.
Here.
Frank Woodard.
Twenty-two. All right, item number five is the approval of the minutes from the January 11th meeting. If everyone's had a chance to read those, and if there are no additions or corrections, I would take a motion to approve.
Who was the motion? Tommy, Tommy Bane with a motion, Glenn with a second. I have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. Are there any discussions or questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Ms. Donna Barrett is here to update us on our, what she's been doing, and also to discuss the hotel motel tax resolution 02-2021-01.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be back here again tonight. I don't have a power call tonight because there's not a whole lot of new information to give, so there is some good additional information. Is that better? Maybe I need to hold it right.
Oh, that was me.
The, one of the last initiatives this body passed was the archive fee of $5 of the implementation. That implementation began November 1st. We've had three months now of full collections, with those first two months being very abbreviated months, simply because they were holiday months, and then the abbreviations with the core systems with COVID. But with even those abbreviations for those three months, the collections have come in already above the projections we had planned. Estimates, the conservative estimates I presented to this body was that you'd be looking at about $14,000 reoccurring new annual revenue with that archive fee. Based on three months' collections thus far, and I can only anticipate it's going to get stronger as things start lifting, you're on track for that to be $21,000 reoccurring annual revenue, so congratulations, we're doing better than expected. What I want to talk to you tonight is the implementation of the hotel motel tax that I presented to budget a couple of weeks ago. One of the things we look for when I come into an entity, to a county, are the entities that aren't paying the taxes they're supposed to. And hotel motels always been one of those, it's been a little more difficult to track down, especially when we've got a lot of the Airbnbs and home, home, pool homes, or rooms being rented out, that you don't see anything about. They'll advertise on what they call third-party marketplaces, or all online. That's going to be your Airbnb, your VRBOs, and things along that line. So they're real difficult for the counties to collect unless we can really identify them with any advertising that they do. Starting in January of this year, the General Assembly has implemented the collection of the hotel motel tax for all the counties that have that through those marketplaces. So they have to register with the state, and the state, then they collect the, whatever the hotel motel taxes for the individual counties, from the Airbnbs and the VRBOs, and then the state remits account to the counties that it belongs to. Currently, Smith County does not have a hotel motel tax for your county area. So without implementation of the Airbnbs collection, you're not taking, you're not getting taken advantage of that. So the resolution you have in front of you tonight is to approve a hotel motel tax for Smith County of 5%. That's typically where they all start off at. Eighty-five or ninety counties already have this in place, so you're just one of the few that doesn't. And once it, once the resolution is passed here, the wording for the private act, which is basically what we're asking for, will be sent up to your state delegation, it will go through the General Assembly, it will then come back here for your implementation of it. So passing this tonight does not fully implement it. We need to get it to the General Assembly and back down here and pass before they can start collecting it from the Airbnbs, the VRBOs. So with that explanation, Mr. Chairman, I'll stand for questions, and then ask if we can take the resolution up out of order.
Okay. We have any questions for Ms. Barrett?
Yes.
What kind of revenue are we expecting?
Unfortunately, that's something I can't estimate. We don't know how many of the Airbnbs and VRBOs are out there, so this is, it could be a thousand dollars, it could be ten thousand, just have no idea what's out there until we start seeing it come in.
This is, this is, this doesn't include campgrounds as well?
Yes, it will include campgrounds. That's the standard definition that's used throughout all the counties. So what I'm, what the resolution I'll write up, the private act that'll be written up will be standard language that's in all the other counties, so you'll be right in line with everybody, won't be any inconsistencies across the state.
So hotels, Airbnbs, bed and breakfast, campgrounds?
If they, if they buy lodging of patients, yes, hotels, any room in, you can someone's house, motels, any of those, campgrounds, camp parking spots, where you pull an RV, and things along that line, that will apply to those.
And so tonight, this is just a resolution to ask the General Assembly to enact the private act, then it would come, go to the General Assembly, it passes here tonight, it'll come back here, it passes General Assembly, and then what's the process?
It'll come before this body again, and you'll have to vote on it at that point in time for implementation. And then right after you vote on it, it will go into law at that point in time. Usually we start the very next month, that way it gives time to get everything up and going and notifications out.
So it's just one reading?
One read.
What's the two-thirds?
Two-thirds. Two-thirds when it comes back, not tonight. This is just a simple resolution.
And would there be a public hearing beforehand?
It's not required on what I have in front of us.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move, we'll just take care of that. We will go on, we'll go back, we'll just take care of later on. All right, thank you, Ms. Dawn. All right, item number seven is the amendments to the agenda and the approval of the agenda. We do have one amendment to the agenda, we need to add the election of the District One vacant seat. No, we don't want to do regular resolutions. At this time, I need a motion to add that election to the agenda. Motion by Daisy Stewart.
Second.
Second by Glenn Reese. I have a motion and a second to add the election of the District One Commissioner to the agenda. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll do that next, but first I need a motion to approve the agenda, as written, with that addition. Joey Nixon?
Second.
Second, Casey Elrod. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will move on to that election. All right, I do have, and you have been presented to you tonight, we do have two letters that have been submitted, one from a Mr. Mark Schwartz, and from Helen Voss. At this time, we will take nominations for anyone that is interested in filling these seats, this seat.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Chris Nixon.
Glenn Reese nominates Chris Nixon. Okay, do not have to have a second on that, just nomination. All right, any, Mr. Givens?
I'd like to nominate Rusty Williams.
Okay. Terry Givens nominates Rusty Williams. All right.
Chris Nixon.
All right, any other nominations?
I'd nominate Mr. Mark Schwartz.
Mark Schwartz. Okay. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Helen Voss.
Helen Voss. Okay. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, I need a, I need a motion to cease nominations.
Motion to cease.
Motion to cease, Linda Nixon, and a second. Second, Steve Babcock. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, we have four candidates tonight. You will say the name of who you're voting for. Now, Jeremy, did some research, because we thought this might come up tonight. You, the candidate to win this election, you must have a majority of the body here. So there is 22 here, so a majority is 12. So it takes 12 votes to win in the first round. If no one receives 12 votes, I need a, I need a motion as to how we want to proceed from there. Do we want to possibly drop the low vote getter, or drop, or drop to the two vote, two lowest, and move on to a, the next round? We are setting the rules for that right now, so it will be done. Am I correct, that is correct, Jeremy, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You need to, you need to establish some form of a rule as to how you would vote without a majority. Okay.
I'd motion to drop the two lowest.
Okay. Second, was, Joey Nixon, all right, I have a motion from Glenn Reese to drop the two, two lowest vote getters if no one receives 12, and a second from Joey Nixon. Any questions or discussions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. All right, we will start with District One.
Glenn Reese.
Chris Nixon.
Terry Givens.
Mr. Chris Nixon.
Billy Bass.
Schwartz.
Greta Kirby.
Mark Schultz.
Jason Stewart.
Nixon.
Jamie Winfrey.
Nick.
Josh Brown.
Nixon.
Dalton Pascal.
Voss.
Say that again.
Voss.
Shannon Minchi.
Williams.
Erica Ebel.
Helen Voss.
Ron Schumay.
Mark Schwartz.
Ryan Cowan.
Mr. Nixon.
Linda Nixon.
Mark Schwartz.
Eddie Stell.
Nixon.
Nixon.
Casey Elrod.
Rusty Williams.
Steve Babcock.
Chris Nixon.
Bill Reese.
Chris Nixon.
Tommy Bane.
Russ Wey.
Joey Nixon.
Chris Nixon.
Tim Keller.
Russ Nixon.
Teresa Gross.
Rusty Gross.
Frank Woodard.
Frank Woodard.
All right, that's what you did, that's what you got. All right, after the first round, Christopher Nixon received 10 votes, Rusty Williams has 6 votes, Mark Schwartz has 4 votes, and Helen Voss has 2 votes. So per the rules established earlier, we will drop the, Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Voss, or Ms. Voss, sorry, and we, and move on, and your vote will be Chris Nixon or Rusty Williams.
Glenn Reese.
Chris Nixon.
Terry Givens.
Williams.
Billy Bass.
Megan.
Greta Kirby.
Nixon.
Jason Stewart.
Nixon.
Jamie Winfrey.
Nixon.
Josh Brown.
Nixon.
Dalton Pascal.
Nixon.
Shannon Minchi.
Williams.
Erica Ebel.
Williams.
Ron Schumay.
Nixon.
Ryan Cowan.
Nixon.
Linda Nixon.
Nixon.
Eddie Stell.
Nixon.
Casey Elrod.
Williams.
Steve Babcock.
Nixon.
Bill Reese.
Nixon.
Tommy Bane.
Russ Wey.
Joey Nixon.
Nixon.
Tim Keller. Teresa Gross.
Rusty Gross.
Frank Woodard.
All right, after that round, Mr. Chris Nixon receives 14 votes, and Mr. Rusty Williams receives 8 votes. So, Mr. Chris Nixon, you are elected as the, or appointed as the Commissioner for District One to finish out that seat. Thank you all for participating and coming out and being involved, we do appreciate that. We will move on to the County Mayor Report. I want to thank School Director Barry Smith. We had an issue with a heater and a possible gas leak, and we're not able to get a private company on site in a quick manner. I called Director Smith, and he sent his HVAC team over and helped us out in about 10 minutes. It's, it's always good when departments help each other, and I appreciate Mr. Smith being supportive and sending his team over to help us with that. A thank you goes out to EMS Director Jeff Crockett and his team. They received their state audit last week and passed with flying colors with no findings. Thank you for the job you're, job you do, thank you and your team for the job you're doing of serving our citizens and doing it well. Governor's money, you will see a budget amendment tonight moving $11,000 and some odd dollars of the money over to be spent by our first responder program for some equipment and supplies. This is another volunteer organization that has never received county funding, and we felt it was, that they needed it to keep them going. One of their responders, or a couple of their responders recently saved a man's life by showing up to his ministry here before the EMS arrived, so we're, we were thankful for those guys and the job they do, and like I said, that's, that's in the amendments now. Baker property, we are still working through the best options for moving forward with that property. Mayor Potts, the City of Goresville, and I will continue to discuss the best options for Smith County and Goresville. As far as the salary study, they are working with surrounding counties and other counties and private industry in pulling that data. There has been delays in getting some of that from the other counties, but they're working through those. The goal is to still have this done by, by early spring. Budget request sheets are out and being worked on, budget hearings begin in March. Census data will start trickling in this spring with full data here by the end of summer, and the redistricting will begin after that. A little good news, our COVID numbers seem to be trending down after the holidays, and the demand for the vaccinations has been high. A new scheduling software is supposed to roll out tomorrow from the state, and hopefully this will ensure that our citizens are vaccinated before out of county residents come and get, come here to get theirs. Any questions for me? If not, we'll move on to Ms. Daisy and the financial reports.
Yes, sir. Where, where are we at on that study that we have done for?
So, I just, salary, we're still working, they're still getting, yeah, still getting data on that, there've been some delays in other counties to get, get back the data. Any other questions? If not, Ms. Daisy? If they have any questions for you? Cash flows through January, and financials through December, as part of your papers now. No questions for Daisy, we'll move on. Number nine is your, you have your committee reports, budget finance, joint economic development, the planning commission. All right, item number 10 is new business. Mr. Jerry Wilmore, would you come down here, please? I told you, you didn't need an attorney, but there, we have one if you need it.
Sure.
That's true. So tonight, in honor of Mr. Jerry Wilmore, whereas Jerry Wilmore was born to Eldon and Neil Wilmore on August 16, 1957, he has been a lifelong resident of the Mono community, and belongs to the Partridge First Baptist Church, where he is a deacon and sommelier. And whereas Jerry started work, started dating Cindy Franklin in 1997, and later married her on March 21, 1998, Jerry and Cindy later went on to have a son named Flack. And whereas Jerry began working at Agricultural Stabilization and Conservation Services, the ASCS, which later became the Farm Service Agency in 1994, up until his retirement on December 31, 2020. During this time, Jerry received numerous awards and accolades. And now therefore, on behalf of Smith County Mayor's Office, I, Jeff Mason, congratulate Jerry Wilmore on his retirement and his years of service dedicated to the Farm Service Agency. I know you have done tremendous work for our farmers in this county, and we appreciate that. Thank you. Ishal. Now we'll move on to letter B, Resolutions. Item number one is the Resolution, Resolution 02-2021-01 is the Hotel and Hotel Occupancy Resolution. At this time, I would take a motion to approve. Motion approved by Ron Schumay, second with Casey Elrod. I have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call. Stacy?
I have a discussion. Can we do a public hearing from spot? Before I start reading?
I guess we could if we, you know.
I just kind of want to hear from the business owners themselves. I've talked to a few of them, and they're concerned that right now it's a struggling industry, another tax on top of it might not be good for them.
Okay.
So, I think it'd be good to hear from them.
Well, they're more than welcome to reach out to you, that'd be fine. Can we add that march to the, okay, we'll again, we'll come back, please, fine. You should have mentioned that in budget finance, we could have done it by now.
I talked to them, yeah.
Okay.
Recently.
It did get a unanimous approval by the budget finance. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussions? If not, we'll do a roll call.
Glenn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jamie Winfrey.
Yes.
Josh Brown.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Minchi.
Yes.
Erica Ebel.
No.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ryan Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stell.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Steve Babcock.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Tommy Bane.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Tim Keller.
Yes.
Teresa Gross.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
Motion passes 21 to 1. Thank you. All right. Resolution 02-2021-02, 2021-03, 2021-04, 21-05 are budget amendments. We probably need to vote on those separately because they're differently, different than what we've been doing tonight, so we will start with Resolution 02-2021-0, it is a general fund 101 budget amendment. It is working inside the, the, the big, the proper one on that is the county building purchases, the $80,000, that is moving $80,000 as a COVID grant over to county buildings to purchase a new double-wide for Station 2 in the Goresville area. We're just going to go back with a double-wide there, since the sale of the Baker property did go through. And after talking to numerous residents in that area, they prefer that name of the station on the south side of the interstate, so that's, right now, that's the best we're going to do. Somewhere down the road, we hope to have a better solution for that, working with the City of Goresville. This one also, you'll see the first responders' money that goes into miscellaneous contributions. But, well, we could group 02-2021-03, because that is the one that transfers that money out of the others' money, if you want to just group those two together. I would take a motion to group Resolutions 2 and 3, because they tie each, they're tied together.
So moved.
So moved.
Second by the, Dalton Pascal makes motion to group, and group and approve, is that correct, Dalton, is your motion to group and approve? Okay. Your second is group and approve, all right, just want to make sure of that. So I have a motion and a second to group Resolutions 2 and 3 and approve. Any questions or discussions? If not, Stacy, do the roll call.
Glenn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jamie Winfrey.
Yes.
Josh Brown.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Minchi.
Yes.
Erica Ebel.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ryan Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon. Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stell.
Yes.
K.C. Elrod.
Yes.
Steve Babcock.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Tommy Bane.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Tam Keller.
Yes.
Tracy Gross.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
All right, item number four, 02202104 is a general fund 101 budget amendment. Daisy, this is the one where we had to move the money, and I'll let you explain.
Much better than I can. No.
Okay, back in October of 2019, you all approved a budget amendment to move $18,000 from the General Debt Service Fund over to the general fund. This is to help cover the engineering, some of the engineering costs for Baker property. And we were pulling that from where we would have spent money on the interest for the excavation. Since we never borrowed that, we decided to take it all around. Just wanted to refresh your memory on that. Since then, we've had review of some of the records. That transfer has been recommended to be reversed simply because the money was originally budgeted to fund interest. They would like to see it stay to fund interest on debt rather than being transferred for any kind of operational cost. So this is just a request to write a check back for one going to the other and make that transfer reverse.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 02202104?
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Glenn Reese, second was Tommy. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions? All right, done. Roll call, Stacy.
Glenn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jamie Wainfree.
Yes.
Josh Brown.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Minchi.
Yes.
Erica Abel.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stell.
Yes.
K.C. Elrod.
Yes.
Steve Babcock.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Tommy Bane.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Tam Keller.
Yes.
Tracy Gross.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
All right, we'll move on to Resolution 5. Resolution 02205 is a general fund 101 budget amendment. This is an amendment inside the discretionary fund that you guys set up and approved for Texas Center, Mr. Terry Collins last month. This was asked to be pulled out and voted on separately. So at this time, and Terry is here if you have any questions. So at this time, I would take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion approved. Joy Nixon.
Second.
Second, Tam Keller. So I have a motion and a second. Tam Keller. All right, at this time, is there any questions or discussion?
Glenn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass. Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jamie Wainfree. Josh Brown.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Minchi.
Yes.
Erica Abel.
No.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stell. K.C. Elrod.
Yes.
Steve Babcock.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
So.
Tommy Bane.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Tam Keller.
Yes.
Tracy Gross.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
Motion passes 17 to 5. All right. Item number six is Resolution 02202106. It is the resolution that we passed basically yearly, and that's asking T.O.T. to widen State Route 53 to 141 from exit 258 to James C. Drive and to also redo those exit ramps there. This is something that Terry Lynn asked me to get you guys to pass, and then we will send it down to her, and she will present this to T.O.T. At this time, I will take a motion to approve Resolution 022021.
Motion approved.
Motion here and second, second one is, here we go. I have a motion by Ron Schumay and a second by Linda Nixon. Any questions or discussions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, item C is the notaries. You have a list of notaries before you tonight. Take a motion to approve those.
Motion approved.
Motion approved. K.C. Elrod, second Eddie Stell. Have a motion and a second to approve the list of notaries. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, in your package, you have a bid opening that's through your presentation to the trustee's office. You'll also notice a resolution that we, or a, a resolution or a presentation marking February 7 through 14 as congenital heart effect awareness week. All right, moving on. Is there any other business? No, I take a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned. Frank Woodard. Second, Steve Babcock. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?